Box down there. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, June twenty six. This is the council briefing. I'm calling it to order. The time is two oh one. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Swat. Council President Orez.
Here.
Clerk, I'm also here. Strauss.
Oh, Councilmember Strauss, apologies.
No problem.
Seven present.
Thank you. I should, I should add again for the record that Councilor Muscata is excused from today's meeting. If there's no objection, the minutes from June fifth will be adopted. Okay, no objection, the minutes from June fifth are adopted. We have no proclamations on today's agenda and today in the council member lineup, we will start with Councilmember Herbold. Following our individual ports, we will then have one twenty minute executive session, possibly thirty. If we do, I'll come back on the record, but for now, we're gonna um hold twenty minutes for executive session. On tomorrow's agenda, the consent calendar will include minutes, payment of the bills, as well as one appointment to the climate pledge giving council. Um, and as you all know, we will take one vote on the consent calendar unless, of course, one of the council members would like something removed to discuss later. There are eleven items under committee reports on the agenda tomorrow. The first is an appointment supporting uh appointing Shereen Dedman to serve as the Seattle City Clerk. As you know, Monica retired and then Elizabeth left, so we have selected Shereen Dedman. Hopefully, you all had a chance to look at her confirmation packet and all the material. In addition, um, Ms. Dedman made herself available to meet with each council office to answer questions in advance of tomorrow's confirmation vote. I hope you all had a chance to look at her phenomenal resume and I'm really excited to introduce her tomorrow uh for that appointment to get it confirmed. Following that vote, council will consider a council bill uh relating to the regulation of home occupations. As you may recall, this was held from last week at the request of the Land Use Chair, Dan Strauss, and Councilor Strauss will speak to that item. We will also take up two council bills and two clerk files reviewed and recommended by the Public Assets Committee. And these include an agreement with Friends of the Waterfront for the operation of Waterfront Park, an agreement with New Rising Sun for the presentation of the annual Bomber Shoot Music and Arts Festival, a clerk file approving the development standards for replacement of Fire Station Thirty One, a clerk file regarding the development standards for the South Park Community Center, and Councilmember Lewis, who is the chair of that committee, will be speaking to those items tomorrow and may address them today. Uh, we will also be considering five council bills recommended by the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee, including a council bill regarding an agreement between Seattle Parks and WashDOT for recreational improvements as mitigation for the Five Twenty Bridge Project. A council bill granting, granting access to the rights to the state of Washington for access over and under property known as Fire Station Twenty Two, a council bill extending block the box in transit-only enforcement programs, a council bill allowing limited application of the herbicides to treat invasive knotweed. That sounds exciting. And finally, council bill regarding a stormwater facility agreement with Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority. And again, Councilmember Peterson, as chair of that committee, will be speaking to all five of these recommendations. All of this information, as you all know, uh for tomorrow's agenda, is available online. Um, so I'd like to alert everyone that next week, City Hall will be open for business on Monday, July third, though we will not have a council briefing next Monday. City Hall and council offices will be closed on Tuesday, July fourth. As you know, it's Fourth of July, and we will hold the council meeting. Um, we'll kick that over to Wednesday, July fifth at two. So instead of Tuesday, we'll do it Wednesday at two, July fifth. Um, you will be receiving a memo from me outlining our council briefing schedule for July, August, and September. We will again be consolidating council briefing meetings to two meetings in July and September and one in August. After today's meeting, our next council briefing will be Monday, July tenth. All right. Um, as I shared, there are no proclamations for me to sign, for us to sign today. So we will begin our review of city council actions and council briefings, and we are going to start with Councilmember Herbold today. And then it will be Councilmember Lewis, Morales, Nelson, Peterson, Sawant, Strauss, and Juarez. Has Councilmember Sawant joined us yet?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry for being late, President Juarez.
That's, that's fine. I just want to make sure you were here. Okay, Councilmember Sawant is with us, so you know what the lineup is. And with that, um, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you so much. Uh, appreciate the handout. So Public Safety and Human Services Committee is meeting tomorrow. There are three items listed on the agenda. First is an update on Google Dispatch. This um will be our most recent update since the last uh one that we heard in committee in February. Uh, we will also be having a discussion and possible vote on Council Bill Twelve Five Eight Zero. This is an ordinance related to app-based worker uh standards, establishing labor standards on deactivation for app-based workers, uh substitute uh bill incorporating some practical um amendments. And uh separate amendments from councilmembers are linked to the agenda. Some of the proposed amendments are mutually exclusive, so we're working with clerks on how best to hear those amendments. We're also hearing from the Human Services Department on Age-Friendly Seattle, addressing social isolation and promoting anti-ageism. The agenda was previously scheduled to include an update from the city auditor about the retail theft audit. Um, we had uh been prepared to ask uh councilmembers to be with us uh until one, one o'clock PM uh at for our committee meeting to to incorporate that um from the city auditor on the council requested myself and Councilmember Lewis retail theft audit. Um, but the eye has been delayed, though. Um, the city auditor has received feedback from external bodies, including the Attorney General, um, the King County Prosecutor, Homeland Security, and several business groups. We've not yet received feedback from the exec- executive branch governments, and um I think folks who are familiar with the city auditor's approach um understand that before finalizing an audit, um, we definitely need to hear back from those executive uh department um participants in the audit. So I'm gonna hold on that and uh hopefully we'll, we'll be hearing it uh before too long. Um, and then um it's a quick update on a bill that we heard in committee, last committee meeting. Uh, you may recall um that on June thirteenth, committee members heard legislation proposed by the Community Police Commission regarding uh Community Police Commission operations. Uh, on June twenty first, after our committee briefing, the CPC discussed the version uh heard in committee on the thirteenth. And um we now, now that we've uh had that conversation at the CPC, the bill itself will be scheduled at the July eleventh committee meeting for a vote. Uh, with upcoming central staff absences, um, we're asking that uh in particular, committee members uh conda- uh contact Greg Boss regarding any amendments by this Friday, June thirtieth. Um, again, that's this Friday, June thirtieth, for the CPC operations. Um. Just a few additional uh public safety-related updates. Just uh reminding the viewing public, with July Fourth coming up, fireworks displays are banned in Seattle and in unincorporated King County. Um, as I um lifted up in my newsletter last week, um, we know that uh in the state, last year, we saw three hundred and ten fireworks-related fires and a hundred and ninety-eight fireworks-related inju- injuries last year. We know this is the busiest day for our emergency responders, and so we ask at um in addition to enjoying professional fireworks displays, like the one over Lake Union this year, um, that um folks stay safe and uh for making, making calls um about fireworks, um unless there is an injury or a fire in progress. We ask that folks call the non-emergency line, uh because there are so many emergencies over the Fourth of July um weekend. Want to also um touch on an issue that um has been well-covered by, by the media. Uh, two weeks ago, Mayor Harrell appointed a fentanyl systems work group. I know um in addition to myself, uh council members, Nelson, Strauss, and Lewis are represented um on these workgroups. Um, I just wanna take this opportunity to say how important it is that this work address all subjects, including the potential financial commitment um associated um with um our path forward and um that we really, it's important to get some clarity on finances and costs, regardless of which direction the city takes. Uh, wanna thank the mayor's office for releasing the results of three independent investigations of complaints uh to the OPA originally uh that named former police chief Est. Um, I thank the mayor for commissioning independent investigations after his office was informed about this shortly after taking office. Um, and after these complain- complaints were languishing um on um the desk of the prior administration, um since they were complaints against um uh the police chief, they weren't, weren't being handled by OPA. They'd been sent to Mayor Durkin's office. Um, and um again, many thanks to the mayor's office uh for, for addressing the languishing complaints. Folks, remember, on a parallel track, the council adopted legislation to establish a process for complaints that name the chief moving forward. Um, and um uh to have not only the mayor's office, but also the Office of Police Accountability and the Office of the Inspector General for aligning their work on this effort with the legislative process moving forward adopted by the council. And uh lastly, just wanna um on this particular topic, appreciate that the mayor has set the expectation um that not only um the chief, but all department heads um participate in processes for complaints even after they're gone. Um. It's, I think, a really important expectation for our mayor in setting um expectations for new hires and um it's unfortunate that um this has transpired the way it has, but um it's an important statement that the mayor made um as it, as it relates to this um set of circumstances. The Office of Inspector General has posted the relevant documents um in the report section of the OIG website. Uh, lastly, on the public safety front, just um wanna uh reference information that I have received from uh the Chief of Police um in the announcing of a new task force to address gun violence in the city after the tragic act of incomprehensible gun violence in Belltown on June thirteenth. Um, recognizing that the police department has already done tremendous work of uh moving, removing large numbers of guns from the uh criminal ecosystem over the last year. Um, and that there, there has been a reduction in serious shooting injuries compared to twenty twenty-two. Um, has been an increase in fatalities. Point um in our entire nation is still facing an epidemic of gun violence. I did talk to the chief um about this task force today. Um, it was important to confirm. I am appreciative and supportive of the constant triaging that the chief has to do with limited staff to address emerging needs. Um, and it was important to um confirm that uh the off- the triaging of officers to participate in this new task force will not result in any reduction to the sexual assault detectives um has the, as had occurred in previous efforts to triage police officers towards emerging priorities. Also, um, on the major events updates, uh just quickly on last week's events, I attended the Morgan Junction Community Association Festival uh last weekend. Um, last Thursday, I was really pleased to visit Chief Self International High School uh to learn how they're addressing the student mental health um needs using five hundred thousand dollars in city funding that I championed in twenty twenty-two. Uh, Denny Middle, Middle School, Rainier Beach, Akikurose, and Ingram also received funds this year. Chief Self is prioritizing Latinx students require uh reported the highest levels of autism and school avoidance, which uh Sable Morales says is one of the more obvious ways that mental health issues present in Chief's self students. A, but a three-pronged approach, including a workshop series focused on ancestral, intergenerational and interpersonal trauma, healing joy and resiliency, including a sixteen-week after-school program uh and a new staff member um that is working to forge relationships directly with students and families to connect them self by providing academic support and re- uh restorative conversations and supporting attendance goals. These learnings from this pilot, from this initial five hundred thousand dollars in those target schools, will enforce the very increased city investment in mental health next year, championed by Councilmember Moscata. Um, uh, in addition, an additional four million dollars. So I'm really, really happy to see uh some of that um those learnings and, and finding out how that they're, they're going to be applied. Um, also, last week, the alternate response uh mayoral and council work group met on Friday, discussed the accomplished and yet-to-be-accomplished tasks towards a quarter three um launch. Also had my regular monthly and twice monthly meetings last week with Director Betts, Chair Gonzalez, and Chief Skoggins. Um, I and Deputy Clerk Amelia Sanchez represented the Legislative Department in the city of Seattle contingent of the Pride uh parade. It was a fantastic city turnout, as well as a huge and very joyous spectator turnout as well. Organizers of the parade say hundreds of thousands of people came downtown to watch in person, not only to celebrate and make welcome our LGBTQ community, also boosting economies and bringing the parade viewership back to pre-pandemic levels. Uh, moving towards this week, I had my regular this meeting, uh twice monthly meetings with Chief Diaz today. Um, I will also have the second meeting with the Fire Department and community stakeholders um with concerns about the new obstructions legislation. We've met with uh DPD already, uh Public Defense. And um we have included the Fire Department Change Team, and this, that was one of a series of meetings that we're having with concerned stakeholders. And then lastly, on Friday, I will be touring the Hope and Chance Addiction Center, which serves homeless individuals and those recently released from jails and prisons. Um, in uh in assist them in procuring or reinstating Medicaid and Medicare health benefits, finding housing and receiving medication for opioid use disorder. Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will pass it on to Councilmember Lewis.
Uh, thank you so much, Councilwoman Herbold. Uh, good to be with you, colleagues. Happy Monday afternoon. We have five items from the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee on tomorrow's full council agenda. Those items are the appointment, first, the appointment of Ashraf Asham to the Climate Pledge Arena Giving Council for a term to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, Council Bill One Two Zero Five Nine Zero, which authorizes the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation and the Director of the Seattle Center to enter into an agreement with Friends of the Waterfront Seattle for the operation and maintenance of Waterfront Park and public spaces. Um, I will just briefly mention, we had multiple hearings on this legislation in the committee. One of the ongoing um hurdles that committee members will be aware of and maybe uh some other members of the council was the ongoing negotiation around a labor harmony agreement with Friends of the Waterfront. I'm very pleased to announce that Friends of the Waterfront uh and the various uh labor unions uh seeking to bargain uh with Friends of the Waterfront did reach an accommodation on labor peace. And uh with that information, um we were happy to, to move forward with the entire package, and I commend the parties for uh working in good faith to resolve that potential conflict. Uh, moving on to the next piece of legislation, Council Bill One Two Zero Six Zero Four, uh which authorizes the Seattle Center to execute uh an agreement with New Rising Sun for the presentation of Bomber Shoot, which will be returning to the Seattle Center this fall. Really looking forward to that and really appreciate um uh the diligence of the Seattle Center in uh really moving forward with those um budget ads that the council has put forward to help bring this together uh and really appreciate the mayor's office and their diligence and um working through this as part of our um post-COVID recovery here in the city. Uh, we also approved a couple or recommended the approval of a couple of clerk files. Uh, first, um clerk file three one four four nine four approving the concept for Fire Station Thirty-One uh located at one one zero, one one three zero two Meridian Avenue North and waiving some development standards. This is a fire station um in District Five, uh and we had a great, very thorough presentation from the department uh on uh the need um and the process uh warranting uh the waiver of these development standards. So we look forward to considering that at full council and um appreciate uh the presentation that we received in the committee. Um, the next clerk file, three one four four nine nine uh modifies some development standards to allow the redevelopment of the South Park Community Center uh and allow for five light poles for the athletic field lighting at that site. Uh, so similarly, um uh we received a thorough presentation and we look forward to uh confirming the committee's decision. All of these matters from the committee uh were unanimously voted out and look forward to um uh consideration of colleagues tomorrow at full council. Uh, Clean City Data for Seattle Parks and Recreation, June twelfth to sixteenth. Uh, eight hundred and thirty-four recovered needles for that period at a hundred and forty-one different locations, as well as thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty pounds of garbage um from those hundred and forty-one locations. Seattle Public Library Updates, uh the short story dispensers operated by the Seattle Public Library um are moving to a new location. Two weeks ago, the dispensers moved from the Central Library um and the uh from the Central Library and the Fremont Library to the Southwest and Capitol Hill branches, respectively. In honor of Pride Month, a collection of Pride-related stories have been added uh to the short story dispensers, in addition to featured local writers. City Hall Park is now open to the public. It's a little outdated uh from, from the recent uh public announcement, but is our first briefing since the opening of City Hall Park. Uh, it's a great place to stop in downtown. I was there earlier this afternoon. Um, and it was good to see community members eating lunch at the provided tables. Um, it was good to uh talk to um uh McKenna and Jamika, the uh park ambassadors who were present uh managing the park concierge. Uh, and there are going to be all sorts of activities at the park. Uh, people can play um chess, they can play Connect Four, and there's going to be music provided by local buskers and other programming. So I do encourage folks, uh especially us here in the Legislative Department so close by um to take full advantage of this new uh newly reinvigorated green space at City Hall Park. Uh, and um huge uh um congratulations to um the mayor's office and our partners at Seattle Parks and Recreation for uh really putting together a great um uh reactivation of the space that the public has been without for so many years. So, thank you so much. Um, Seattle Parks and Recreation is offering a Summer of Safety um program, which is a free program that provides structured activities and a safe space for young people not connected to other supervised programs. Summer of Safety will operate on various days at seven different community centers throughout the city. Additional parks and human services teams are teaming up to provide free summer meals, and you can find out more about all of these programs on the Seattle Parks and Recreation website. And Council President, that, those are all of my updates, so I'll give it a second here to see if there's anybody who has any questions. Okay, seeing no questions, I will pass it on to Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Uh, let's see. Um, so first, there are no items from the Neighborhood Arts Education Rights Committee on tomorrow's full council agenda. We did cancel last week's meeting. Uh, apologies for the late notice. I think it was Wednesday. Um. Uh, we will have a meeting on July fourteenth. That's the next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, I wanted to sort of follow up on the um comments of Councilmember Herbold um about the SPD Task Force. Uh, my office will be meeting with them next week uh to understand more about this task force, as well as to cover uh or to follow up on several issues that we have been hearing from our constituents. Um, uh, other departments, arts. Last week, uh Mayor Harrell announced that Golgun Kayim is going to be serving as our next director for the Office of Arts and Culture. I'm very excited about this. Uh, Golgun is an award-winning interdisciplinary artist, a former uh Stanford Arts Institute Creative Fellow. Um, she's got extensive public arts administration experience um and really brings a strong focus on supporting our creative economy uh and revitalizing that. So I had the pleasure of interviewing her um as part of the search committee and am excited she'll be joining us uh starting July nineteenth. Um, we will uh have her in my committee, um probably a little bit later in the summer, maybe early fall, once she's had a chance to settle in, but looking forward to that. I do want to thank interim director Royal Ally Barnes, who has been serving in the position for the last two years. Um, serving in that capacity, uh but Royal has actually served the city uh in many different capacities over forty years. Um, so really want to thank her for her deep commitment to public service um and wish her the very best. Uh, last week, I attended my first board meeting of the Association of Washington Cities. Um, uh, Councilmember Moscata, uh, her term has expired and rolled off, so I will be serving uh as the new representative along with Councilmember Strauss. Um, last week, we elected new officers um and reviewed the calendar, so I will be attending the Board Retreat a little bit later this fall. Uh, last week, I met with some residents from Lake Washington Apartments down in the Rainier Beach neighborhood. Uh, they've got lots of concerns about some property management issues that they're having there, so um we will be meeting with Seed tomorrow, who is the owner. Uh, and my staff is working uh closely with them to make sure that those issues get resolved. Um, I do want to thank uh Councilmember Zahalai and Congresswoman Ja- Jaiapal, uh whose offices were also present um at the meeting that we had in community last week. Um, we also had a check-in with Reach about implementation of the funds that we got for the CID Neighborhood Safety Plan uh in the last budget process. Um, that is all well underway. We also had a check-in with the PDA. Um, they are expanding their services into the Rainier Valley, uh so wanted to make sure that we had a conversation with them about that implementation. And we're looking forward to that continued partnership with our social service providers um to make sure that they are uh getting the resources they need to serve the most vulnerable in our community. On Friday, I attended the Beacon Hill Elementary uh International Elementary School Festival at Beacon Playfield. Um, lots of kids out uh just chomping at the bit for the last day of school. Uh, but we had a really sunny afternoon and they were out singing and dancing and sports and uh snacks, so um really want to thank the principal and the PTSA who helped organize that for the kids out there and um and glad everybody had a great time. Uh, and then I also attended in the evening uh the Pride Celebration of Somos Seattle, which is a Latinx uh organization founded by Ray Corona and um had a great time out there, uh meeting with folks, talking to them. Folks from the Mexican consulate were there. Um, and really just a, a great opportunity to see the representation and the great intersectionality of uh folks in our community. So thank you to them for that invitation. This week, my office is continuing to meet with an Othello uh neighborhood stakeholder group around increasing youth programming uh in the neighborhood, particularly at the UDEB Othello Commons. Um, we have also been meeting with young people Um, we have also been meeting with young people from across the district about how we increase uh the kind of particularly late-night teen programming that is available through our community centers. Um, you know, a lot of resources were sort of taken away uh during the COVID uh period and and the young people are really hungry for uh for a full rebound of those services. So we are getting late-night basketball, for example, but um but the snacks that used to be provided aren't there in some cases. And so there's just a real um desire to make sure that the full return of the programming and availability of services and just options for young people to have something to do uh in the late evening um are getting ramped back up. Um, we're also uh attending a community visioning session in Beacon Hill with the Beacon Hill Community Council, Beacon Business Alliance, and the arts community. Uh, I want to wish a happy Somali Heritage Week to our Somali neighbors. Uh, there will be celebrations happening all week. And then on Saturday, I'll be attending a Somali Heritage Independence Day event. Uh, and finally, tomorrow, we'll be attending the groundbreaking of a new development in the CID alongside the mayor's office and Office of Housing Director Michael Winkler Chin. I'm looking forward to that. Uh, that is all I have, colleagues, unless there are questions. I will hand it off to Councilmember Nelson.
Well, hello, everyone. The Economic Development Technology and City Light Meeting uh Committee does meet this Wednesday, and I uh I want to note um that it is meeting early at nine o'clock, and thank you all for um for accommodating the early start of this meeting. Uh, there is the uh DAP Announcement Downtown Activation Plan that is going to be happening at ten, so I'm starting this meeting early, and we have two very short items on our agenda. Uh, one will be a discussion and possible vote on Council Bill one two zero five nine four, which will give City Light the flexibility on moving forward with overhead electric facilities on streets and alleys in the First Hill neighborhood. So uh it's just flexibility around where um uh they must uh put replacement or uh new electric lines, basically underground or overhead, and we had a briefing and discussion about that at the last meeting. And then we have Resolution three two zero nine five authorizing the commencement of cable franchise uh contract renewal proceedings with Comcast Cable Communications. And this will be a briefing discussion and possible vote because this is um routine legislation. All right, so meetings that I took last week, I met with the Executive Director of Rainier Valley Food Bank with my staff Taman uh to learn about their expanded operations during the pandemic and also hear about the um their plans for expansion of their fairly new facility uh in the fundraising they're doing around that. And speaking of um urban agriculture, uh as we did earlier today, um there will be a a garden on that site, so that's exciting. Um, my chief and I, my my chief of staff and I had a meeting with Principal Zach Stoll of um Robert Eaglestaff Middle School last week, and uh this is something that I initiated after receiving multiple emails from parents following the shooting incident that occurred at um the corner of North Ninetieth and Nesbit Avenue North just before eight AM. Two people were shot and wounded right there, right at about eight o'clock when um during the transition time when kids are arriving to school either by metro bus or on foot or by car or whatever. So um you know, this uh this sort of might have gotten lost in in some of these events, but um it was an active shooter incident uh right across the street, and the principal and his security staff were um responsible for getting kids safe inside within about a two-block radius area of the school and also securing all the buildings, et cetera. And this was difficult because in part um uh Robert Eaglestaff, it has a comprehensive special ed program, and a lot of the kids are uh in wheelchairs or hearing impaired or have other disabilities. But I was uh impressed and really surprised that they were able to keep people calm and safe. Um, considering that understaffed SPD had their hands full with the situation, and it was, I don't know, it was chaotic and traumatizing um for the for the staff and for the students and the and, you know, the parents were remarking that their kids shouldn't have to see that. Um, you know, wounded bodies and blood, et cetera. So um I I realized that shootings are happening all over the city. Uh, and um I'm really glad that the that uh the chief's gun task force is going to be focusing on this uh this stretch, this neighborhood in part because, you know, this this particular um this particular incident might have gotten sort of drowned in the furor and grief over um the 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 murder of Ina Kwan and her unborn child the day before. But so I'm just mentioning it now and just noting that what the parents heard, I mean, what I heard from the principal that he heard from the parents is is basically shocked that this area is um uh at the unsafe conditions because Nesbit Avenue is a safe route to school. And there is a um, he showed me photos of um a fairly extensive uh open-air drug market that is right along the way as kids are walking to school, and that's where this occurred. So I'm, I reached out to the mayor's office about um removal priority of this um of these unsafe conditions, and we'll see what happens. Anyway, on that uh, not on that note, unfortunately, but um I do want to say that I was unable to attend the demonstration uh on Saturday, June seventeenth in Belltown. Um, so I asked Tom Graff, uh who is the president of Belltown United to give me a tour of the neighborhood, and so I was joined, well, um, Tamen and I were joined by other board members of Belltown United, neighborhood residents, and Tim Burgess of the mayor's office, just to look at the hotspots in the neighborhood, particularly the alley that's right around the corner from where that incident took place. And um the mid-ambassador that joined us did relate that there is rampant violence and drug dealing going on in that alley. Um, and they won't even go in there to clean it or deal with trash because there's no egress because it's abutting a uh a building site. So that is, that is problematic, and it's right across the street from a building where uh many, many elderly people live and and families. So heard from those folks, and we also talked to the general manager of Hatch Cantina, as well as the Assistant General Manager of the Belltown Inn, as well as the property manager of Ventana at the Market, which is the building where Aburia Bento House is located. So anyway, got um, was able to see up close some of the neighborhood concerns, and I am really um looking forward to having progress on on public safety issues. And I know that now is not the time to talk about the severity of our public safety crisis. It's in the news all the time, but when is the time to voice the outrage of our constituents or our own, what is going on right now? So um hopefully, we'll see some improvement soon. Anyway, the um, the task force or the Fentanyl Systems Work Group that Councilmember Herbold's uh mentioned has four subgroups, and I joined the first of one of the two subgroups that I'm on, which is the Community slash Therapeutic Court Work Group last week, and we had a very um rich discussion with lots of varying perspectives, and it does seem as though uh folks are willing to jump into that, and uh I'm not really sure what our um our, when our next meeting is, but those talks are underway. And the other subgroup that I am on is uh on substance use disorder treatment, so I look forward to seeing what's going on with that um throughout the summer. Anyway, I will end my What Happened Last Week notes by saying that my staff and I met with the organizers of the twenty twenty-three Day Trip Festival, so this is a positive thing to end on. Uh, this is happening on July sixteenth at Myrtle Edwards Park, and it's being put on by Insomniac, which puts together festivals and concerts all over the country. And um I emphasize that I would really like to see that they serve uh food and beverage from our local small businesses, and they assured me that they will be doing that and uh that uh the economic benefit to the cities in which they produce these events is is top of mind. All right, finally, uh, sorry, I thought that was the last thing. The T Noble Park uh Community Cleanup last night was was actually filled with really with lots of different organizations convened by uh in part the Mariners and uh Together Seattle. And uh I was part of the graffiti painting over crew in Soto, and it was really great to see so many people come out for that and help the city get ready for the MLB All-Star Week. So finally, meetings I am taking this coming week, I'll be meeting with the um Deputy Inspector uh Scott from OIG for a meet and greet. And this Friday, I'll be attending the long-awaited grand opening of Harbor Island Studios. Harbor Island Studios is a key economic development project that will strengthen our creative economy sector, especially film, because it is the first soundstage that will be available for filmmakers and all kinds of creatives since nineteen ninety-six. And if everyone knows that this is an initiative um from King County, Dal Konstantin Executive spearheading it. And I've been wanting to go there for a long time, and it will, it has been open, but uh this is a sort of a rolling um public open house, if you will. And then finally, on Saturday, I will be attending the Elliot Bay Book Company fiftieth anniversary celebration and really excited about that. So that's all I've got for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. I pass the baton to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, colleagues. There are five items from our Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee on the full council agenda tomorrow afternoon. All five items were approved unanimously by the committee last week. Uh, with Council Bill one two zero five nine five, Seattle Public Utilities is seeking a routine renewal of its authority for the limited application of an herbicide to treat knotweed at the Cedar River Municipal Watershed. This renewal has been granted approximately every three years since twenty-ten. As you may know, knotweed is a harmful invasive species that is legally required to be controlled. The Regional Office of the Washington State Department of Health confirmed its support for this request from Seattle Public Utilities. This legislation was recommended unanimously by our committee. Council Bill one two zero five nine eight will authorize an agreement between Seattle Public Utilities and Sound Transit for the ownership, operation, and maintenance of stormwater facilities in northeast Seattle. The legislation was recommended unanimously by committee. Council Bill one two zero five nine nine is time-sensitive legislation that extends our authorization from the state government for the automated traffic enforcement, often referred to as Block the Box, which is designed to protect pedestrians. Without this legislation, our existing authorization expires uh at the end of this month. Uh, this council bill is supported by ESTOT and was supported by the city or approved by the city attorney's office. I want to thank Calvin Chow from our council central staff for his work on this. Calvin circulated the council bill on June twelve to all council members and informed us of the time-sensitive nature. Our committee adopted it unanimously last week on June twentieth. Uh, crafting it as emergency legislation enables it to take effect immediately upon the mayor's signature, and the mayor's office is standing by for city council votes on it tomorrow afternoon. As you may recall, the city council adopted the original Block the Box Authorization unanimously in twenty-twenty as ordinance one two six one eight three. When the state granted new authority recently for additional types of automated enforcement, such as allowing enforcement cameras in designated drag racing zones, ESTOT was attempting to incorporate all the new authority and renew existing authority all at once, but that became challenging, so we split that concept into two bills. This is Council Bill one two zero five nine nine that we need to adopt this week to retrain our existing Block the Box Authority and the new authority uh that is contained in a different bill, Council Bill one two zero six hundred, which we'll hear for a second time on our July eighteenth committee. Um, so if you have any questions, please contact Calvin Chow for tomorrow afternoon. Council Bills one two zero five nine six and one two zero five nine seven are two council bills that facilitate the completion of the remaining construction for State Route five twenty, sometimes referred to as the Rest of the West Project that the city is coordinating with the Washington State Department of Transportation. Council one two zero five nine six authorizes an agreement between Wash dot and Parks and Rec Department for the construction of the Portage Bridge Rowan Oak Lid over State Route five twenty. And Council one two zero five nine seven authorizes an agreement between Wash dot and our city's Financial and Administrative Services Department, FAS, to grant limited access rights to the state over and under a portion of Fire Station twenty-two, which sits adjacent to where five twenty meets I five. Both council bills were recommended unanimously by our committee last week. Our next meeting of the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, July eighteenth at nine thirty AM. As you know, our committee meets on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, so next committee meeting would uh be on the first Tuesday of next month, but that's July fourth, so we'll see you on July eighteenth. A key item at that committee meeting will be amendments to Council Bill one two zero six hundred, which is the local authorization ordinance that initiates implementation of a new state authority for use of traffic enforcement cameras where there is dangerous drag racing. If you have uh drag racing zones in your district that could benefit from camera enforcement under the new state law, or if you have questions about the bill, please confer with uh Calvin Chow on our city council central staff. A co-sponsor, I'm co-sponsoring that with Councilmember Lisa Herbold. Central staff would like to receive suggested amendments by July sixth, if possible, so they can be crafted and approved by the city attorney's office and published prior to our July eighteenth committee meeting. There are no questions. That concludes my report. I will pass it on to the next person.
Councilperson Swat, you there?
Yes, Councilperson Swat.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Councilperson Peterson, and apologies uh to the council. I'm not able to be on camera because uh I'm having very shaky internet access all of today, but.
We are hanging on Councilmember Peterson's every word, so they gave you time to get ready.
Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone. Tomorrow's introduction and referral calendar includes the legislation from my office to create rent control in Seattle. The Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee will hold an initial discussion on the rent control bill at our special committee meeting this Friday, June thirtieth at nine thirty AM. During the meeting, we will hear from a community panel and then from council central staff, who will provide an overview of the rent control policies in the bill. After this Friday's committee meeting, we have scheduled another special meeting of the committee for Wednesday, July twelfth at six PM at All Pilgrims Church on Capitol Hill. In uh the July seventh regularly scheduled meeting time for the committee will be canceled. The July twelfth meeting will be dedicated to a public hearing on the rent control legislation. It will be held in the evening, and the location is accessible by many public transit routes. This will allow for more working people to give public testimony. And um councilmembers Morales and Nelson have already indicated that they are able to join this committee. And um I I have heard from Councilperson Perez and Councilmember Lewis that they're not able to, but if you are able to, that would be very much appreciated, just like the meetings in City Hall. It will be a hybrid meeting, allowing councilmembers and the public to participate in person or remotely over Zoom. And councilmembers who are not members of Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee are also welcome to participate in any of these committee meetings. Please just let my staff know. The rent control legislation from my office is only the first step in order to protect renters from outrageous rent hikes. We will not only need to pass rent control in Seattle, we also need to overturn the outrageous state law that prohibits any city or town in Washington State from passing any law regulating rent. That state law has pestered on the books for the last forty-two years since the Democrats and Republicans in Olympia gifted it to the landlord lobby in nineteen eighty-one. To address this, the rent control legislation from my office is essentially a trigger law. In other words, it becomes effective the moment the state law banning rent control is overturned. We know that this is a legally feasible approach because we have unfortunately seen the right wing use trigger laws to attack abortion rights around the country, which we have strenuously opposed. In the case of rent control, I think it is extremely essential that this kind of trigger law be passed in Seattle in order to lend moment, major momentum and much-needed momentum for a statewide movement to force the state legislature to repeal the ban on rent control. The rent control policy my office is proposing has none of the corporate loopholes that the landlord lobby has often used to undermine and nullify rent control protections in cities and states across the world. I'll go into more detail about each of these during the committee meeting this Friday. Um, and we'll just summarize them now. The rent control policy from my office, CAP- The rent control policy from my office caps rent increases at no more than the rate of inflation. Landlords can choose to raise the rent less than the rate of inflation, reduce the rent or keep it the same, but they may not raise it more than inflation. All the rental housing in Seattle will be protected. In some cities, rent control only applies to certain rental homes, and you have to be very lucky to get a rent-controlled apartment. In our policy, all renters will be protected. There is no vacancy decontrol in this rent control policy. Some cities have created a loophole where landlords can raise the rent by however much they want anytime a renter moves. This is what vacancy decontrol is. This means that the rent control policy becomes far less uh effective in keeping rents affordable citywide. It also creates those outrageous situations where an unscrupulous landlord will try and bully a renter out of their apartment in order to raise the rents. There is one-to-one replacement of affordable units anytime there is new construction in this uh proposed policy from my office. So which means that if a developer demolishes a ten-unit building to build a hundred-unit building, the new landlords need to maintain the rents of the ten units they demolished using some of the new units. There will be a rent control board deal with exceptions. So if a small landlord faces unforeseen costs like a tree falling on the roof and they really need financial support, there will be a rent control board that can grant exceptions, but those are only for when an exception is really needed. We will go into more detail about this at the committee on Friday, and my goal is to bring the bill for a committee vote at the regularly scheduled meeting of the committee on July twenty-first. But I will, of course, review that timing after the committee meetings on the thirtieth and the twelfth. And um that's my report. Uh if there are no questions, I can turn it over to Councilmember Strauss. I don't see any, so um Councilmember Strauss, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh wait, hold up. It looks like Councilman Nelson has a question.
I might have, uh I'm sorry, excuse me. Um what is the anticipated vote date on this legislation, Councilmember Sawan?
The, yeah, no problem. The schedule, uh proposed schedule uh is that the vote could happen at the committee on July twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Thanks.
Looks like Councilor Herbl has a question too, Councilmember Sawan.
Just a real quick question. Um Councilmembers, want you invited other councilmembers to attend committee. When is the first committee meeting when this is being heard?
Friday.
It's it's this Friday at nine thirty.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Of course.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll continue moving on. Council President, great to see, colleagues, great to see you. From Land Use Committee, uh there is one item on tomorrow's full council agenda that is Council Bill one two zero five two zero, Home-Based Businesses. This is the permanent legislation following up on changes passed during the pandemic, adding flexibility for home-based businesses. We have seen this already help entrepreneur entrepreneurs take their idea, uh start it in their home and move into brick-and-mortar stores. This is an economic uh development bill. These changes have been well received that were made during the pandemic, well received by Seattleites, and the bill before us tomorrow makes these small changes permanent. This month, out of the Land Use Committee, we also passed the Maritime and Industrial Zoning Changes. We passed it out of committee. This represents the final steps in a seven-year process bridging compromise between stakeholders who are typically in direct opposition with each other. As I stated, in March of this year, all councilmembers were welcome to join our committee meetings and add amendments during the committee process. Amendments at full council are not welcome, and we will likely have a substitute bill of technical corrections that are not substantive in nature. We look forward to final passage of these five bills and a successful resolution to a long road uh and the process that brought that has brought people together to find common ground. Just want to stop there, check any questions on industrial maritime before I move on. I'm not seeing any, but raise your hand as we're continuing to go through. I want to start with just an overview of Land Use Committee in total, just over halfway through this year, through this calendar year. I want to start with this overview to date and moving forward because uh just for reference, we have already had eighteen Land Use Committee meetings this year. Uh typically, this the Land Use Committee would hold a total of seventeen meetings in the full year, which means just over halfway through this year, we have already exceeded the standard number of meetings. This has been due to the additional time that we've taken with the Tree Protection Ordinance and the industrial maritime zoning changes. For the remainder of the year, we will be meeting this coming Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, and next Wednesday, next Thursday, July sixth. We will have two meetings in the month of September, two meetings in the month of December. Our schedule in September is already full. Councilmembers who have connected with me about their bills are contained within our our draft schedule. December meetings are reserved for any cleanup work from the entirety of this year. Understanding this, this takes us to having twenty-four meetings this year as compared to the seventeen regularly scheduled meetings. And for this reason, we will only hold Land Use Committee meetings as necessary during the months of July and August, uh because we are all, we've already exceeded our scheduled number of meetings, and we have many more to come. Bringing this back to this week, our next Land Use Committee meeting is the regularly scheduled meeting this Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at two PM. We have four items on the agenda. Council Bill one two zero five nine one, the Office of Housing Omnibus Bill. Uh Council Bill one two zero five eight one, the Affordable Housing Design Review Amendments. Council Bill one two zero five nine two, Pioneer Square Rooftop Clarification, and a transportation resolution to accompany the maritime and industrial zoning changes. Uh the Council Bill one two zero five nine one, the Office of Housing Omnibus, is technical cleanup to clarify regulations related to affordable housing. Council Bill one two zero five eight one, the Affordable Housing Design Review uh Amendments Bill. This legislation is a pilot program to allow mandatory housing affordability onsite performance projects to be exempt from design review and gives all market-rate housing projects the option to choose administrative design review as we pilot improvements to the design review program ahead of taking a top-to-bottom review of how to improve the program. Council Bill one two zero five nine two, Pioneer Square Rooftops. This legislation clarifies twenty-twenty-two changes to rooftop regulations for buildings in Pioneer Square mixed zones. The changes before us in committee are clarifications to a bill we passed last year, which had assumed these changes were included, and we now understand further clarification is needed, which is the purpose of this bill. This bill does help us revitalize Pioneer Square. Moving on, uh summarizing the July sixth committee meeting, since we do not have a council meeting between here and there, we have twenty-five items. Don't worry, twenty-two of them are appointments. Council Bill one two zero five eight eight, uh we are having a public hearing on the Moratorium of Floating of On-Water Residences bill that we passed out of full council on June thirteenth. We have Council Bill one two zero five nine two, the Vote on Pioneer Square Rooftops that I just mentioned. We have the Vote on Transportation Resolution to Accompany the Maritime and Industrial Zoning Changes, and may roll appointments for the following boards. We have two appointments for Equitable Development Initiative Advisory Board. We have sixteen appointments for the Design Review Boards across the city. There's a number of different boards. We have one appointment for the Urban Forestry Commission and three appointments for the Seattle Planning Commission. The public hearing on the Moratorium on Floating on Water Residences, this is the public hearing required as part of the moratorium we passed at full council on June thirteenth. As uh I mentioned, at full council, this moratorium takes limited and meaningful action to protect our environment and our waterways while permanent policy is developed. In short, this legislation uh reduces the amount of gray water that is discharged into our freshwater bodies as these permanent regulations are finalized. On July sixth, we are just having the public hearing that is associated with the bill that was passed earlier this month. In summary, colleagues, we are meeting this Wednesday at two PM, next Thursday at nine thirty AM, and the maritime and industrial zoning changes will come to full council on July eighteenth. Thank you, colleagues. That is the Land Use Committee report. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Seeing no questions, I will now pass it to Councilmember Juarez, Council President Juarez.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Uh there are no items from the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee on tomorrow's council agenda. However, our next Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee meeting will be Thursday, July twentieth at nine thirty AM. So last week, last Monday, as you know, City Hall was closed in um in observance of federal Juneteenth holiday. I'd like to mention that Sharon Williams, the voice of Seattle, wrote and performed a Juneteenth poem, which is currently running on the Seattle Channel. Um Sharon is a dear friend of our office and, of course, the city of Seattle, and we hear Sharon every Tuesday. As Sharon is also the voice for our rules and guidelines for public comment and also the voice for the Seattle Kraken. So uh congratulations to Sharon, and um we really enjoyed posting her poem in our um newsletter. I I hope the rest of you had a chance to do that as well. Last Tuesday, we met with Unified Care Team to discuss interdepartmental solutions to help connect unhoused folks in D five to shelter and services. On Wednesday, we met with the Low Income Housing Institute Lehigh to discuss the new Maple Leaf Tiny House Village that will be, we believe will be uh after some community involvement in District Five on Lake City Way on eighty-six, that's still in the work. Uh that's still work. We're still working all that out with the community and working with our friends at Lehigh. Uh we also met with the Regional Homeless Authority regarding homelessness in D five and citywide. Um and let's see. Let's see, what else I got here? Last Thursday, we attended the Sound Transit Board of Directors Meeting, where we considered the preferred alternatives for the Everett Link Extension Draft Environmental Impact Statement and heard the annual safety report to the board. On Friday, for the second year in a row, was very exciting. We attended the Refugee Women's Alliance REWAP, their graduation at the Kraken Community Iceplex. Uh we are joined by actor Danny Glover, a friend of ours, uh the CEO Jackie McCormick of Rise Above, the Deal Director Dwayne Chappelle, the Honorable Judge Jones, who is on the One Roof Foundation, a state Senator Javier Valdez, and our friend Susan Lee of REWAP, Director of Early Learning and Center Operations. So we now have Pre-K and Beacon Hill, Rainier, one in Lake City and another one coming up in Lake City at North Haven. So D five will have two REWAPs, and that was what we worked with. And I should have put this on here. It's not on here, but I couldn't make it, but my staff met last week with the groundbreaking for the second um REWAP Pre-K Center with North Haven. So we'll have this intergenerational um building with elders and children. And we've been working on the upzones for North Haven since two thousand and seventeen or eighteen. And so now that it's upzoned and the money came in and the loans came in, BECU, Amazon, and I forgot who else are all um lending money to help us reconstruct. And also, the people from North Haven were at the Kraken Community Iceplex Friday as well. I should have some more information for you on that, because that really is a big deal. Um this council and two councils back um back in seventeen or eighteen is when we broke ground on the Tony Lee House and put in the Pre-K for REWAP. And now we're having the second one at North Haven, so I'm really happy about that, and I cannot thank Susan Lee enough and her attention. And these are the kids that are in all these Pre-Ks that every Wednesday they come to the Kraken Community Iceplex, they take turns every third week, and they ice skate, and they send out a bus to go pick them up, and it's amazing. And putting ice skates on forty children, three and four-year-olds, is is quite the task. I've done it three times, and I don't know if I'm going to do it anymore. Anyway, um coming up this week, this week we'll be meeting with HSD as we normally do. We will also, I will be attending the South Transit North King Subarea meeting that we do. And my office will be attending the Low Income Housing Institute Lehigh meeting regarding the proposed Maple Leaf Tiny House Village on Lake City Way. So the meeting will be at six PM on Thursday, June twenty-ninth, at the Faith Lutheran Church, and will be hosted by our friend Josh Castle from Lehigh. So this is a time and an opportunity for community to discuss and have have Lehigh answer questions. We've done this before with Lehigh, when we had the house put on, on where was that up and down, on ninety-nine? The Lehigh House on ninety-nine.
Oh, Friendship Heights.
Friendship Heights and
The Nesbit one.
The Nesbit House, which is was was a tiny house and now is actual brick and mortar. So I'm hoping that we have a good turnout and uh community will be welcoming to this tiny house village. So with that, I think that's all I got, unless anyone has anything else, any questions? All right, not seeing any questions. Um I'm going to move us into executive session, folks. You should have all gotten notice last week. So let me read the magic legal words, and then I will tell you what we're looking at in a time, what kind of time we're looking at here. So if there's no further business, we will move into executive session and not hearing or seeing any further business. We will now move into executive session. As Presiding Officer, I am announcing that the Seattle City Council will convene into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. The council's executive session is an opportunity for council to discuss confidential legal matters with the City Attorney's Office as authorized by law. A legal monitor from the City Attorney's Office is always present to ensure that we are not discussing issues of policy, which of course are reserved for open session. I expect the executive session to last twenty minutes, so Madam Clerk will let us know when the twenty minutes are up. Um and if we need to make it extend that time, then we'll go back on the record and extend that time, but we're looking at twenty minutes. Um as I shared, um at the conclusion of the executive session, this council briefing meeting will automatically be adjourned. The next regularly scheduled council briefing meeting is on July tenth. Um that's a Monday, right? July tenth, yes, July tenth at two o'clock, and right now, council is in executive session, so please stand by.